Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting will please come to order. Adequate notices meeting was provided in the following ways. Notice published in the Courier-News. Notice posted on the Bolton Board in the Municipal Building. Notice made available to the Township Clerk. Notice sent to the Courier-News and the Star Ledger. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Weisman?
Here.
Mr. Haidaka? Oh, he's not here, sorry. Mr. Mitterondo?
Here.
Mr. Ali?
Here.
Chairman Cahill?
Here.
Will everyone please stand for the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag. I, the states of America, stand one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Mr. Caneely, do we have any changes to the agenda today?
We have many changes to the agenda today.
Please go slow, my friend.
Sheila Hobson, 2602 Wade Street. That will be postponed to December 14th. The applicant must notice. Alan Cruz, Maple Avenue. Postponed until December 14th. The applicant must notice. As far as not fee, postponed to December 14th, 2023. They must notice the towns. Pass Beverly postponed until December 14th, 2023. Go further notice. Ian Sabardi, 609 Runyon Avenue. Postponed until December 14th. They must notice the property owners on the property list. L N R Properties, 60 Normandy Drive. Postponed until December 14th. No further notice. Those are all the changes I have this evening.
Okay. Laura, I'm gonna need you to babysit me through this one because I did not get a chance to mark off like two or three of these. So I'll start with the first one, which is number five, 23-ZB-90V. Sheila Hobson?
That's adjourned.
Please, I'm so sorry, sir.
I think, I think number eight is our first hearing.
Thank you so much. I did not download the update that you sent me, Laura. So my apologies. Number eight, which is 23-ZB-99V. Marza Khalid Bay.
Is Marza Khalid Bay present?
Yeah, I'm here.
I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? Swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth.
Yeah.
Your name and address, please?
It's Khalid Bay, 99 Highland Avenue, Piscataway, New Jersey.
Thank you. Mr. Bay, could you explain to the board what you'd like to do here?
I'm applying for a variance to put a fence. And my property is at the corner lot. It's Highland Avenue and Deerfield Avenue. And on the side, I was asking where I can put defense by leaving six feet of the street.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hinterstein has a report. I think Mr. Chadwick is gonna go over it. Mr. Chadwick, could you address some issues here, sir?
Yes. The report was prepared by Mr. Hinterstein. It's dated November 1st. And there are a comment with regards to the fence. The front setback is required to be 35 feet. And a solid six-foot-high fence is not permitted in that location. He and I both recommend that the applicant be given some relief and move the fence 15 feet from the property line, which is less than half the setback. If you've had a chance to look at the street, it's all open in the front yard areas. And to have a fence out at the street level would be a significant change to that roadway landscape. So I recommend to the applicant, you'd have to move the fence back an additional nine feet. You're proposing six. We're suggesting 15. And in addition, I have a note on your plan that you've agreed to move the shed to conform with your setback requirements. Is that correct?
Is that correct, sir?
Yes, I'm agreeing to move the shed. But I was requesting if I can get, instead of 15 off the street, if I can get 10 feet at least.
We're recommending less than half the requirement. I think that's a significant compromise. And I don't want to adjust that.
It's not a bad deal, sir.
Yeah.
Compared to what it could be applied, it's actually quite a good deal. A good compromise, I should say. I think if you agree to it, we can move forward and probably approve this application, sir.
Yeah, I mean, maybe probably I'll react to the same thing. Is there any room to get at least, you know, to 10 feet instead of 15?
You start at 35 feet. And you move into your variance. You're getting a significant variance. 10 feet does not do it. I suggest you take the proposal from the chairman.
The way the board's gonna lean on this one, sir. I think it's a good deal, good compromise. And I would take it if I were you. If not, we can put it to vote now. And I don't, from the, my opinion, I don't think it'd be approved.
Okay, so if I don't take this now, what do I have to do, sir?
If you don't take the offer from the board, the board will vote on your application. And your current application proposes a six-foot setback instead of a 35-foot setback. The board never gives that much relief. They will give some relief, but not that much.
Yeah, well, even I thought, and I was actually going with 35 only, but later on, on my same street, I had seen two houses which had, you know, six foot of fence on the Deerfield Avenue, the same street where I live. So by saying that, I thought, okay, I might have to, you know, apply for variance. And that's where I put an application for variance.
We don't know if those fences were put up with approvals or with permits. So we don't know if they're legal.
I see. All right, so yeah, then I'll agree with this. I'll go ahead with 15.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other board members have any questions for this application or comments? Hearing none, I'm gonna open it to the public. Anyone in the public have any comments or questions about this application? Spockley?
No, and Chairman?
Okay, gonna close the public portion. And I will make a motion to approve this application with Mr. Chadwick's and Mr. Hinterstein's recommendations. I think I got a second. Thank you. Please call the roll?
Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Your application, as amended, has been approved. We will memorialize it in a written document at our next meeting. And we'll send that document to you. You'll need that for your permits.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night, sir.
Thanks.
Okay, I'm walking through muddy waters here. Number nine?
Yes, number nine.
Okay. Laura, read this to me because I don't have the, after the ZB, I don't have it.
Oh, yeah, because you don't have the updated one.
Right, I know, I forgot to download it. I apologize.
You know.
I know, I know, you hate it when the chairman does this.
23ZB-98V, Geatree Naee.
Is 23ZB-98V present? Okay, you're muted. I need to swear you in?
Yes, I'm here.
Could you raise your right hand? Swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Your name and address, please?
Geatree Naee, 23 Redbud Road.
Thank you. Could you explain to the board what you'd like to do here?
So I have a deck that my dad put in. And I am requesting to keep the deck. It's 18 by 18 in size. I am removing the railing and the roof over it. And the deck is six feet off the ground.
Six inches.
I'm sorry, six inches, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chadwick, would you please?
Yes. Both Henry and I agree, this is more like a patio than a deck because it's almost at ground level. All the other implements. So we basically think that you would approve it subject to removal of railings, the roof, the siding, and leave it as a patio in the place where it now exists. Other than that, there's no other recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chadwick, can you address paragraph two with regard to the fence?
So that fence is not our fence. It's the owner behind us. And he already moved his fence seven feet inside. So the fence does not exist anymore there.
Thank you. Okay. Any other members of the board have any questions for this application? Any comments? No? Gonna open it to the public. Anyone in the public have any comments or questions for this application?
No, and Chairman?
Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna close the public portion. And I'd make a motion to approve this application. I think I have a second.
Yes, Steve. I second it.
Please call the roll?
Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Your application's been approved. We'll memorialize it in a written document and send that document to you.
Thank you.
Good night, Ben. Thank you. Let's move on to item number 14. 23-ZB-64/65V, VYO-USA Inc. Did Mr. Patel appear?
No.
We do not have a quorum for that application yet. It's a use variance. We need five members present to start the application. I recommend that maybe we should do the resolutions. Resolutions. And try and reach Mr. Patel again to see if he's going to appear.
I agree, thank you, Mr. Caneely.
Okay, first resolution. Walter Hernandez and Tarcela Lopez, which you voted to approve. Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Next is Santat Lilia. This applicant decided to withdraw the application during the public hearing. Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Next is John Manode, which you voted to approve. Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Next is Mohammed El Ashri. This was an application for front setback, which you voted to approve. Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
And last is Equity Land. This was from a month ago. We had some delay regarding the language in the resolution, but it's now set to go. Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Those are all the resolutions I have this evening. Perhaps we can wait till we hear from Ms. Buckley to see if Mr. Patel is going to be able to join us.
I just spoke to him. Steve Weisman, I just spoke to Kalpech, she's joining us now.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Nahal, I don't see Rajiv on.
He's coming now.
I mean, my client.
Yeah, Rajiv's supposed to be there.
Well, he's on as an attendee. He didn't use the link, so I will, that's Ramesh. What was the name? I'm sorry, there's a bunch of people on here.
Rajiv. R-A-J-I-V.
Shah.
Yes.
All right, I will make him panelist.
Yeah, I think now he's on.
Yeah, I got him, I just sent him in.
Thank you very much, Laura.
You're welcome. Is there anybody else? Because there's a whole bunch of people. Are you missing anyone else while we're waiting? No.
They just may want to attend and view, that's all.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I didn't ask them all to be here, so.
All right.
Rajiv, thank you.
Okay. Okay, we're almost there. Thank you for your patience, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. That's you.
Kalpech, what's up? What happened? He's linked in. I'm putting you on speaker, Kalpech. Say it again, what's happening?
Oh, like, I think I'm going at a public one, that's why.
Laura, can you help him?
I don't see him at all. Is he under a different name?
Kalpech, he logged in under a different name, sir?
No, no, hold on. I go to the...
All right, so you could just...
I go to that public notice one, I click the link.
Yeah, but if you click the link, are you on your phone or your computer?
I'm on my phone. It says an email address is kalpech.petel. I'm just typing again.
Yeah. Mr. Caneely, I don't know. I sent them the link. I could resend it. I don't know what else to do.
Maybe you should try resending it.
Can you resend me one more time, please?
Yes, they're doing that.
We're gonna do it now, Kalpech.
Okay, but I have to open the whole thing again, so give me a second.
All right, we got time.
Do we?
Well, we finished those first two applications in 15 minutes, so.
That's true, we'll give you that. Zoning Board. All right, I just resent him the link.
Let's give him a couple of minutes to set it up.
And then what I'm gonna do. What am I? I sent it to him two different ways, Chairman, so one of them should...
We'll give time.
He's almost, here he comes.
Yeah.
Hi, Kalpech.
Hey, sorry.
No, no, don't worry about it. Thanks for...
I have to change my device, so.
That's fine, okay.
Important things you're on, okay.
Let's start.
Let's proceed.
Mr. Stahl?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. All right, Jim Stahl, S-T-A-H-L. Firm is Boris Golden Foley, Vignola, Harmon and Stahl in North Brunswick, New Jersey. I've had the pleasure of being before you previously. Laura and Jim, Laura or Jim, do we have jurisdiction? Have we had the...
Yes, I reviewed the notice. It is adequate. We have jurisdiction to proceed.
Thank you very much, Jim. All right, I'm gonna, I have a reputation, which I hope to keep tonight, of being efficient, yet quickly, quick, in order to get my application through for the convening to the board. This is an application, I must admit, I'm rather privileged to be working on. And it's a Hindu temple at the former flower shop at the S-Curve on Mettler's Lane. I'm sure all of you who've lived in Piscataway remember the curve and remember the flower shop. I have about five witnesses, but they will move quickly. This project is a result of a township and applicant partnership, if you will. Not financially. But we spent a lot of time with your professionals and our professionals and modified and revised the proposal two times to reduce the size that everyone was concerned about. We think, so do the professionals, but they can speak for themselves, feel that it's a very good fit. And when you see the elevations, I mean, it is an absolutely beautiful facility that I think you all will be proud to be a part of, assuming we obtain the approvals, of course. My first, I'll give you my witnesses. I have Rajiv Shah, who is a volunteer but principal of the international organization of this temple. I then have the preeminent engineer, Chris Saleh, from Menlo Engineering, who will do the engineering testimony. I then have Nahal Harari, an architect specializing in temples. I then have the other preeminent that I use, Mr. Jay Troutman with regard to traffic. And finally, coming up the backside will be Ed Kohling, the professional planner, who will tie it all in a nice knot. We think we comply. We think we should get this approval for the reasons that Ed will give you. We do not think we're making any impediments to traffic based upon what I'm gonna elicit from Rajiv. There is an issue that Chris will deal with later with regard to an additional 25 spaces, which we, I think, we're gonna look for a waiver from, but bank them in the event we need them in the future. So we don't have to come back again. But I think Chris will very adequately describe that. Rajiv, would you please raise your right hand? And do you like to be affirmed or swear?
Affirmed.
I'm sorry, he broke up. I didn't hear his answer.
Affirm.
Sir, do you affirm that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Your name and address, please?
Rajiv Shah, 2831 Taylor Crest, Missouri City, Texas, 77459. Thank you.
Slow down. You'll have to slow down a little bit. Your first name is Rajiv, R-A-G-I-V. Your last name is Shah, is that correct? Yes?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes, that is correct.
And you are associated with an organization called VYO. Please tell the board what VYO stands for. And please, for my benefit, because I'm not gonna pronounce it, spell the V. Rajiv, we're having technical difficulties.
It's a Vallab Youth Organization. It's a... Can you hear me?
Yeah, but you do break up, so just check it out.
Okay. I represent Vallab Youth Organization, also known as VYO. It's an international organization providing facilities across the globe for the betterment of the youth and the Hinduism.
And you, how many do you have worldwide?
We have got, we are in 15 countries. And currently, we've got over 80 centers across the globe.
And you have selected on behalf of the VYO the Piscataway location, is that correct?
That is correct.
And you believe that there is a need for it in this community and immediately adjoining communities, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, and we're not reaching out for people in outer counties, but really the central Jersey Piscataway area, is that correct?
That is correct, yes, Jim.
Now, I'm gonna try and, until Mr. Caneely tells me I'm doing too much leading, I'm gonna try and help you out here. We have a structure which is going to be the temple, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
And how many deities are there?
There is going to be seven deities in there. Each one of them are different forms of Krishna.
All right, and with regard to those seven, periodically their ornaments and their clothing is changed depending on a holiday, is that correct?
Well, Jim, it will be changed on daily basis. The ornament and the dresses and everything, that changes on daily basis, depending, it's based on the practices that we follow.
And there's gonna be food that is prepared for these deities, is that correct?
That is correct, yes. Our priest will be preparing the food that will be served on daily basis.
And that is from a kitchen in the temple, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, yes.
And there will be two priests. And in your religion, they are allowed to marry the lower priests, if you will. But so you may have two, you will have two priests on site, possibly with a wife, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
And there are two apartments, we've knocked off, excuse the phrase, we've eliminated one. So there'll be two apartments with two bedrooms each, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Bathrooms, but no kitchen, is that correct?
Yes, they'll be using the primary kitchen that they have to prepare the food.
And the role of these priests is to take care of the deities on a daily basis, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
All right, now the... Mr. Taviri will tell us about the floor plan. But in terms of this operation, you and the other devotees will come into the temple area and you go in a semicircle viewing area to pray to the deities, is that correct?
That is correct, yeah. We go and do the services from there.
Now, with regard to that, I'm gonna get to the services. And these numbers are approximate. I'm trying to use the larger numbers so everyone understands. Now, there are services on Saturday and Sunday, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
And that can be anywhere from 30 to 50 people over a six or seven-hour period, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
You will have approximately six services. So you could have zero, one, well, you'll always have the priest. But you may have one to six or seven participants each of the hours over a six or seven hours, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Now, at the same time that we are doing the temple prayers in the assembly, in the big area, you also are gonna have a small school being operated in the social hall, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
And the maximum again, and I'm using larger numbers than Mr. Kohling may have had, anywhere from 30 to 60 people will be in the educational area. But these 60 people are consistent with the other 50 that are at the service. So there could be 100 over the course of a day, six hours. But the parents may be at service. The kids may be in a religious education area. Or the parents and the children could be together. So it's not as if there's a double up. Am I being accurate?
Yes, you are being very accurate, Jim.
During the week, you expect anywhere from 15 to 30, I think I said this already, on a weekday basis, Monday through Friday, spread over a day, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Now, you also intend to use a social hall from time to time, not for... Now, you also intend to use a social hall from time to time, not for gigantic parties or anything, but for smaller social events and following services, you may have refreshments in the social area, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
But these are the same people who will have gone to the services and now move into the social room, to social, to talk, and, uh, maybe discuss certain religious topics, am I correct?
That is correct, Jim.
And you also intend to use, to the extent, uh, it works for you, um, community purposes, whether it's going to be, uh, vaccinations, if there's a program, or, uh, yoga, uh, you're not gonna use this for profit, but you're gonna use it for community outreach and to assist the community to the extent they, they need your help, is that correct?
That is correct, yeah, and we'll be doing something for stress management and avoiding some depressions and other kind of things as well, to help the community that we can be better.
Like meditation, et cetera, and primarily, you're interested in, in capturing the youth, uh, of the community, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Now...
We have to help the next...
I'm doing okay so far, right? All right, now, we have four high holidays a year, uh, those are in different months because of the calendar that your organization, that the church follows, is that correct?
That is correct, yeah, we use different, uh, calendars, so, which does not align with the Western calendar.
And it's usually a quarterly, um, four times a year, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Now, I, uh, the amount of devotees that come to the, um, high holidays could be as many as two to three hundred people, is that correct?
That is correct.
Now, that sounds like a lot of people, and it is, if you're going to pack them in in an hour, but those two to three hundred people will be spread over services over a six to eight hour period, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
And, and this is a condition that we're, uh, and in between each service, each forty-five minute service, there'll be another thirty minute, uh, open period where you're gonna have your volunteers, uh, control traffic, so after forty-five minutes, let's say, one-fifteen, the service is over, uh, your volunteers will go out to make sure that cars safely leave and new cars safely enter. Also, if there's any traffic issue, as indicated by the Piscataway Police Department, uh, we agree to hire, uh, any necessary, uh, police department personnel for those holidays to control any traffic, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Now, in your experience, you really, it's, it, this has worked out for you, has it not?
Yes, that, uh, so currently we have got like four other locations like this in USA, and all of them has been working pretty well, especially from the traffic as well as the people from perspective.
All right, now, I'm gonna, one of the conditions we have, and I have to tell the board, I'm pretty proud it was my idea in a different town, and a different town accepted this, a, a different type of, uh, uh, temple, uh, and what's gonna happen is, when you have the high holidays, you will control how many people are in each, uh, service, is that correct?
Yes.
And you, and someone's gonna say, well, how do you do that? And how do you do that is, they will have to sign up on the website, and they will get a timed ticket, and that is when they are going to go to that service, is that correct?
That is correct, yes, we are using, uh, a special application so that people can register, and we give them the timings when, which service that they need to attend.
And you believe that this will satisfy, uh, any, uh, I'll call it any crunch that may occur from too many people coming, is that correct?
That's true, right, yes.
Now, I'm gonna give you, uh, to the extent I forgot anything, uh, there is a, the cooking, there is a cooking kitchen for the priests and the deities, and then there is a hot table in the social hall, a warming table, is that correct?
Yes, there'll be warming table because we'll be serving the food to the, the volunteers as well as the, uh, participants from time to time.
All right, so it's not a full kitchen, it's really warming tables?
No, it's just warming tables.
You don't intend to cook there, if you were gonna do any cooking or food handling, you understand that the organization will have to obtain the necessary food handler's licenses from either Piscataway, or I believe it's really the county of Middlesex, you understand that?
Yes, I understand that, yes.
Now, with regard to, there is no call to worship, I'm sure the board, uh, understands the call to worship, we have no, no, we have no, um, forgive me, no horns, sirens, or sounds that emanate outside to, that would, uh, affect the public indicating, uh, worship times, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
So, we, we just, we don't have it, uh, the, as Mr. Uh, uh, our architect may say, we have certain, I'm gonna call them spiritual or religious additions to the building, uh, which there's a discussion whether they are height or not, but that is part of what you have there, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Now, one last question, and then I'll ask you if you have anything else. The priests that live on site, now, I don't know whether you're familiar with how some other religions work, that being, uh, in the Catholic faith, you know, having a rectory nearby the church, uh, and the Jewish faith having a parsonage, uh, and the Protestant also having some type of a, uh, a, a house provided to the minister, is it essential that the two priests live on premises?
Yes, it is essential, and it must have requirement for us, because it's just like, I'm using a simple analogy, that when doctor goes for the surgery, they need to be prepared just before they go to the operations theater, similarly when they're serving the deity, uh, our priest needs to be, uh, go through a special process, and hence, they need to be on site in the same building.
Right, and I wanna ask a question which, uh, well, it's a, it's a, it's a necessary question, under no circumstances, you understand, is anyone to use those two apartments except for the priest, you understand that?
Yes, mm-hmm, yes.
And no one is, you, under no circumstances do you lease or allow anyone other than the priests to reside in those apartments?
That is absolutely correct, and we won't be doing it anyway.
Um, is there anything I have omitted from my extraction of information from you?
No, I think you've done, everything that we discussed has been covered.
Only the, only the board can say that, not you, okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, subject to questions, I give Mr. Shah to you.
Thank you, appreciate that, any members of the board have any questions for Mr. Shah? Mr. Stahl, you can proceed with your next...
I have one, two questions, Jim.
Please, Mr. Chadwick, sorry.
The, the festivals four times a year, would you notify the police department in advance? So it doesn't all of a sudden there's a, you know, a traffic jam, then the cops have to run up there, that's...
That, that...
Just don't know how, how safe it would be to have parishioners out in Mettler's Lane directing traffic.
No, no, I will answer, John, because I know that, absolutely, in fact, I'm sorry I didn't think of that first, but we will notify the police department, uh, quarterly, we'll give them the dates that we're gonna have...
Just not surprised, that's all.
Right.
The other item...
They may, may have to stop a football game just for this, uh, celebration. That's a joke.
And, uh, what's the other thing, um? Oh, the, there's no call to worship, but is there any outside, um, parade or anything that takes place outside, or is everything in the building?
Everything inside the building, we don't do anything outside of the building.
Well, there, I just wanna clarify that, Rajiv, there is that courtyard outside, is there a time periods when people may sit out there?
Oh, yeah, people sit out there, but, uh... Yeah, means they, uh, they might be coming through there as a small position, but they won't be making any sound during that time, it's just basically they're just coming and, uh, doing, you know, coming in together from there.
Okay.
It's all inside, and won't be making any louder noise, noises.
Each one of these temples has its own character, and sometimes there is outside events, and sometimes there are not, you do not.
We do not.
Uh, do you have weddings there?
Uh, no, we are not planning to have weddings there, uh...
No weddings, funerals?
In the community hall, we might, uh, allow somebody to come out and do wedding, but again, it will be internal, won't be outside.
Okay.
Thank you, John. Any other member of the board have any questions?
Yeah, the number of parking space is gonna be done by Mr. Troutman.
Uh, John, I'll have to leave that for Chris. Chris and Jay Troutman have the couch.
Yes, okay.
Okay, great, okay, Mr. Stahl, call you next, please.
Thank you very much, uh, Chris Saleh. Chris?
I'm here.
Yeah, please raise your right hand.
Mr. Stahl, that's Mr. Caneely's job to do that, he'll, he'll raise his hand.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yeah.
Is your volume on, Chris?
Yeah, I can't hear Mr. Saleh.
Chris, fix your...
Anything at all?
It's better, go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, Jim, and can you hear him now?
Yes, I can hear him now.
Okay, thank you, sorry about that.
All right, uh, Chris, uh... Uh, you were engaged by the applicant, uh, your firm, uh, for, uh, site engineering, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, please give the board the benefit of your, uh, education and, uh, licensing.
Uh, yes, my name is Christopher Saleh, uh, last name is... S is in Sam, Z is in zebra, A L A Y. I currently work at Menlo Engineering Associates located at two sixty-one Cleveland Avenue in Helm Park, New Jersey. I received a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from the University of Rhode Island in two thousand and eight, and I've been a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey since two thousand and thirteen, uh, certified in Piscataway before...
I said he'd be qualified, Mr. Caneely?
Mr. Saleh's qualifications are all good. We're good, Chris, please proceed.
Mr. Weissman has his hand up, I don't know whether that's a mistake or, I just wanted Laura to know.
I think we're good.
All right, all right, Chris, uh, you know how I like to do it, I'd like to do the following, I'd like you to present to the board, A, the existing conditions, what it is today, B, what the proposal is for the development, and C, if, uh, the chairman agrees, we can then respond to staff comments or do that later, okay?
Sure, sounds good. Um, now, I have prepared two exhibits, actually three exhibits for you this evening, uh, is it okay if I share my screen?
Yes, yeah, please do.
Can everyone see the exhibit on my screen?
Yes, it's, it's up there.
Okay, so first exhibit is, uh, titled four sixty-four Mettler's Lane, existing conditions exhibit dated eleven nine twenty-two-three, uh, this exhibit, I can mark into evidence as A-one.
A-one. Thank you.
And this is an exhibit depicting... Uh, with an aerial background depicting the site and the surrounding areas, it shows the existing conditions, and it has the property boundary, uh, highlighted, and the second exhibit, which I'll mark as A-two, uh, is entitled four sixty-four Mettler's Lane, overall plan exhibit also dated eleven nine twenty-three, and... And this is a, uh, colorized rendering of the submitted overall plan with zoning landscaping turned on and, uh, over top of that same aerial background. And the third exhibit, which I'll introduce, uh, if we get to it, but it, it shows where the land, like, bank parking, uh, will be introduced. Uh, but the, to go through the, uh, site description, the property is designated, uh, is a rectangly shaped lot designated as block ninety-seven oh one, lots twenty-eight point oh one and twenty-eight point oh three, uh, as designated on the tax map... of the Piscataway Township, uh, the site contains approximately three hundred and twenty-seven linear field frontage on Mettler's Lane, which is a county road, also known as, uh, County Route six oh nine. The address is four sixty-four Mettler's Lane, which is on the south side of Mettler's Lane, uh, probably... approximately three hundred feet from the intersection with Sutton's Lane, and overall the property is approximately five point six acres and is located entirely within the R-dash-twenty residential zone. Uh, surrounding the property, you'll see that we have single-family residential pretty much on all sides of, of the property... with only Mettler Lane frontage and some wooded area, uh, from north, northwest of the property. Uh, under existing conditions...
Let me, let me ask you two questions, Chris, let me ask you two questions before I forget. Nor, in the northern corner, the northeastern corner, that was a house that V Y O acquired in order to square off the property, isn't that correct?
Correct.
And that was because there could have been issues with regard to driveway access, et cetera, and it made sense to acquire the property, correct? Yeah. Uh, and one last question before I forget, I had, uh, indicated in my introduction, working with the township, we reduced the, uh, uh, the footprint of the buildings about twenty-four percent, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Because we, we, we wanted to... We wanted to respond to the township's concern on size, okay, go right ahead now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, uh, the site is currently, uh, developed, it's occupied by two single-family dwellings, uh, as well as a former retail building or, uh, uh, Mettler's Forest, and they're all located along the front, the frontage along Mettler's Lane, there's currently three curb cuts, there's one to the northernmost dwelling, and then two to the, uh, Mettler's Forest, and the second dwelling has, uh, driveway, has access off that, uh, that parking area for the florist. Uh, the remainder of lot is mostly open space and wood... woods with a small stone or gravel, uh, parking area, and then there's two areas of wetlands, one at the center of the site you'll see, which is an isolated wetland with a buffer, and then there's a second, uh, wetland that runs along the southern property line, it's a, uh, there's an existing ditch there that has a, uh, wetland buffer... and fifty-foot repairing buffer, so although the site is five point six acres, the environmentally restrictive areas reduces the site developable area to about four point two acres from that five point six. Now, what we are proposing for the site moving to exhibit A-two, uh, the applicants are taking approval to demolish all of the existing buildings and features on site outside of that environmentally restrictive area, uh, in order to construct two new buildings and associated parking. Now, site will function as a religious facility, as previously discussed by the client, the front building is a three-story... uh, ten thousand four hundred and sixty foot footprint, uh, located about the midpoint of the site, and it meets all the required setbacks for front yard, side yard, and rear yard. The first floor of the building will contain, uh, an exhibition hall and classrooms, and the, the architect will go through, uh... the buildings a little bit more, but I just wanted to get a little bit of it down, uh, the second floor will be the prayer hall, and the third floor will be where the living quarters are, the, the two, uh, apartments with two bedrooms each for the priests. Uh, this building is where, um, a few of our variances are, uh... focused and created, so the, the use of this site, uh, for religious purposes, for worship and Sunday school, uh, type use is a conditional use and permitted, uh, the fact that there are living quarters for the priests for religious purposes creates the use variance that we're seeking tonight. Uh, the... Uh, the fact that there is, uh, this is a worship hall, also allows for a maximum of five acres for the site, and since we are at five point six acres, uh, variances required, but again, as I described, due to these environmental, uh, environmentally restrictive areas, you'll see we really... we kept disturbance out of a large, uh, swath of the southern portion of the site, and reduced the developable area to four point two acres, uh, where again, the site, uh, permits a maximum of five acres, and one, uh, one more variance focused on this front building is for, uh, building height where a max... from of thirty-five feet is permitted, thirty-eight feet is, uh, requested, and again, uh, we'll, I'll let the architect discuss this a little bit more, but, um, as Mr. Stahl stated, we did reduce the, uh, the overall building footprints of both buildings by about twenty-four percent, um, but, but the height is, is certainly required, uh, and again, partially for, uh, religious purposes. Now, the second building is a... two-story, six thousand five hundred and seventy square foot, uh, multi-purpose building that's ancillary to the, uh, to the place of worship or the, or the temple, uh, it's set directly behind the front building, and the two buildings are connected by about a five thousand square foot, uh, paved patio, uh... uh, between the two buildings. Now, the two, uh, and again, this, this rebuilding makes all, uh, required setbacks as well, the two buildings total, a building, uh, total building coverage is seven percent of the site where twenty percent is permitted, so we're well with under the permitted building coverage, and again, we... So we're well with under the permitted building coverage. And again, we. Worked with the township to, um, you know, make sure that everyone's happy with the, uh, proposal and we reduced the building square footage by quite a bit. Even though, as you can see, we're well under, uh, the permitted building coverage. Uh, access to the site is by way of a right-in, right-out driveway. We consolidated the. Three curb cuts along Metlery Lane down into one. Uh, so the entrance to the site leads to a front parking area. There's also, uh, twenty-four foot wide drive aisles around both sides of the building that leads to parking on the sides of the building. And also to the rear of the building. Uh, there's a total of one hundred and sixty-eight parking space. We proposed where two hundred and forty parking spaces are required. Uh, this, of course, is a, a, a variance is required for this parking. And we go have our traffic engineer who will touch on that a little bit more, but really we have a shared parking condition here. Um, the two buildings work. Uh, you know, they're ancillary to each other. We're not going to have one function. At the front building and a whole separate function at the rear building. So if you look at the, uh, parking requirements for each building. The front religious facility requires one hundred and twenty-five spaces and the rear facility requires one hundred and fifteen spaces. But really they're working together and so that, that total I believe. Believe is, is consolidated and, uh, due to the fact that we have multiple, uh, worship times throughout the day. Um, we're really reducing the max, uh, the maximum use of the site, uh, at any one given time. So we feel that there, there's. More than enough parking on site. But there was a comment from our planner or from the township's planner in, to introducing land bank parking in order to possibly, you know, address the parking situation should. Uh, an issue arise in the future. And so I did lay out, uh, where we would propose, uh, twenty, you know, about twenty-five to thirty additional spaces. Along the northeast driveway. You can see we, we kept parking out of, uh, this area, even though it's, it's obvious that we could, uh, add more parking. And that's due to a fifty-foot parking setback from adjacent residential properties. So you'll see on, uh, this additional exhibit I, I created what would. Uh, where this additional parking would be located. This is a copy of the overall plan that was submitted, but it has. Uh, a modification to it to show these additional. Parking spaces. Now I showed thirty spaces here, but, um, of course, we, we may have landscape islands or, or may want to. Reduce the limits of the parking. So I'd say twenty-five to thirty spaces could be added to the, to this aisle. And at worst, uh, I'd say the, the parking setback would be thirty-one. One point five feet from the adjacent residential property where fifty feet is required. So, um, should the township, uh, like us to land bank these parking spaces, we would require a parking setback variance. For these additional spaces of that, uh, thirty-one and a half feet where fifty feet is required. Um, now, moving on to. Uh, so the spaces are all nine by eight. And, uh, which is meets township requirements and drive aisles are twenty-five foot wide, also meeting township requirements. We did make a modification, uh, based on fire official comments. Uh, the fire official wanted twenty-five foot interior, uh, radii, which we accommodated. And, uh. Wanted us to, we previously had a one-way drive aisle and angle parking. We widened up the drive aisle to accommodate, uh, the fire officials' comments and provided ninety-degree parking here. So we did, we did some additional impervious coverage, which was offset by reducing the building. Um, but, uh, I feel this actually works better with, with flow throughout the. And meets all township requirements. Uh, we'll be providing EV parking spaces as required by the state statute. And seven handicap spaces, uh, are provided at the north, uh, north. East corner of the, uh, front worship building to provide accessibility, uh, to these religious facilities. Uh, by way of sidewalk that interconnects around, uh. Uh, around the two buildings and we also provided sidewalk along Met, the Metlery Lane frontage along its entirety. Um, which again, it's, it's going to be under county review.
Can I ask a quick question, Chris? Um, how many EV, uh, stations are you providing?
I, I believe it's, it's four percent when, when you get over a hundred and fifty spaces, so. We'll meet the statute, but it's four percent of one hundred and sixty-eight, so it's, it'll be seven, uh, EV spaces.
Okay, thank you. Please proceed.
The recommendations, they're operable when you open the facility. Is that your intent?
Um, we have not discussed that. I believe we're only required make-ready by the statute, but if, uh.
Well, some, the township would like it by statute, but some would have to be operable too. I suggest you just do, put them in and have them work.
What is the request, John? What's the request from the board?
To have the EV stations up, up and working for the opening of the center.
Well, I think that, uh, I don't, you think that's a problem, Chris?
No, no. Not at all. It's, it's no, really the, whether it's make-ready or it's operational, we, we have to run the electric conduit to the space. It's really just installing.
I think we prefer that. I appreciate. That's going to accommodate that, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Uh, there is a dumpster enclosure provided, uh, along the northern drive aisle, right about the midpoint and adjacent. To the distant buildings that will be enclosed and landscaped, uh, for screening purposes. And again, good thing by all the constraints and some of the, the grade change along the site, we're providing a retaining wall. Along the southwestern portion of the, uh, parking area. And this is where, uh. One of our variants is required for, uh, the fence, the safety fence that sits atop the retaining wall. Since the retaining wall at this tallest point is about ninety and there's a four-foot high fence on top of that, uh, the fence is considered to be thirteen feet high where six feet is permitted within residential zone. Uh, and again, that's really driven by the fact that we have this environment that can strain along the, the property where. We're trying to provide as many parking spaces as we can, um, while also, you know, reducing any environmental, uh, impact. And. I think that hit all of the, uh, proposed.
Chris, just so the board understands.
A, a monument sign, uh, yes.
Well, before you do the monument sign, we have obtained a, it's a, uh, a sore easement from a neighbor, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And if Mr. Caneely wants to see a copy, I can get it to him, but we, we have access to sanitary, correct?
Correct, yes. And I'll, I'll touch on that, uh, about to get to the stormwater and utilities, but the sanitary easement you'll see. Runs off the rear of the property through the adjacent lot and connect. X into the existing sanitary sewer system within Wickley Avenue. Um, but, uh, just to touch on the monument sign, we're proposing a monument sign. It meets all the required setbacks. The setback is twenty-five feet and a maximum of thirty-two square feet. And, uh, there, there was a request to, to submit a detail. I believe, uh, we, we have a. Uh, an exhibit for, we'll submit a, a copy of what the sign will look like, um, to the zoning board for the, for the permit. But I believe we have a, a similar one used at another facility that we'll be providing.
Is that sign lit?
Um. Yeah, I believe there's going to be uplifting, either uplifting or, or the sign will be backlit. We, we have not.
Not inter, not inter, not internalizing lighting.
Okay, so, so uplit. We, we can accommodate whichever the township prefers, but up, uplit would be fine.
The sign is just a standard sign. It's not digital or, or moving, I should say.
static.
Um, moving on to some of the more technical items, the stormwater management. Uh, census of major development due to the amount of disturbance and increasing impervious coverage, uh. Uh, we are required to address stormwater management, which we are, uh, handling via conventional stormwater management system of catch basins and underground pipe. Uh, as well as porous pavement. Uh, due to the new, uh, green infrastructure requirements, uh, porous pavement is being provided. It provides water quality and the, uh, stone bed beneath the porous pavement provides quantity reductions. Uh, in a, uh, uh, an environmentally friendly manner and meets all green infrastructure, uh, requirements. Where it will be township requirements and we're also, um, discharging within the wetland buffer area, which requires a DEP permit. Um, and we're filling the isolated wetlands. So not only will the township be reviewing the stormwater management, but the DEP. Will be reviewing the stormwater management along with the wetlands permits. Uh, so. We'll get a thorough review of the design, but I'm, I'm confident it meets all, uh, requirements of the municipality. The county solar ocean DEP, uh, to handle somewhere in using green infrastructure and maintaining the existing drainage pattern. Which is from Metlery Lane towards the rear of the property, uh, towards the, the ditch along the southern portion of the property. And that's where our discharge point is to continue, uh, to maintain that existing drainage pattern. Uh, the sewer connection we discussed through the, via the easement off the back of the property. And, uh, gas, electric, water is all to be, uh, serviced from, uh, the existing infrastructure within Metlery's lane. Uh, the app can is. Proposing, uh, a substantial amount of landscaping in order to, uh, provide some screening as all, as well as beautify the site. Uh, there's a heavy buffer, a, a double row of evergreens along the northern portion, portion of the site, northern property line. Uh, and along Metlery's Lane. Uh, there's a double row of evergreens along the, uh, southwest property line. And then we're utilizing the existing, uh. Trees and, uh, environmental area to provide some, some screening to the south. You can see off the property line to the southwest, there's, there's some existing woods, uh, that exist there today as well. Overall, we're providing fifty-eight shade trees, one hundred and forty-two evergreens, uh, thirty-one flowering trees. Four hundred and twenty-nine shrubs and five hundred and eleven ground cover dispersed throughout the site as well as, uh, internally. And along the, the buildings. Um. We have a, a, a request to provide some additional foundation plantings, which we are happy to do, uh, and we can, we can. Do so to satisfy, uh, the township professionals. Uh, and in regards to lighting, finally, uh, we're designing the site to be safe and adequate, utilizing LED light fixtures. We have thirteen pole-mounted fixtures mounted at eighteen and a half feet high with an average of one point three nine foot candles. A minimum of point four foot candles in the drive-out and parking areas. An average to minimum uni- uniformity ratio of three point four eight to one. Uh, and again, that, that meets all township requirements, uh, to provide safe and adequate lighting. And we have, uh, no spillage off into the adjacent residential properties. And the only, uh, slight spillage is to light the intersection of the site with Metlery's Lane. Uh, which is really a, a safety concern and is, uh, recommended really to, to provide a, a safe entrance for, uh, for everyone. And that, that really summarizes my testimony. Unless there's any questions.
Uh, Chris, in the northern, um. Back of the, uh, property, you said that you're putting in a whole bunch of evergreens and I see that. Um, do you know what size they're going to be planted at and what's, uh, they'll, they'll grow to? Any idea?
Uh, I can. I can take a look real quick if you bear with me and take a look at my.
Just wondering what the height would be at maturity to buffer it with the neighbors.
Mr. Gale, they're basically not always spruce in the. Um, what is the, they're no green giants in there. I forget what it is. They're all going to go up thirty, forty feet.
Oh, okay, then, then Chris, consider my question answered.
Yeah, if the board approves this application, what I suggest, um. Mr. Stall is that there is a number of recommendations in. Mr. Hinterstein's report dated November third, two thousand twenty-three. Relevant to landscaping and a couple other improvements on the property. Have you reviewed those and can you agree?
I was going to get to.
Yeah, we will read those comments.
Yo, generally.
I'm sorry, one at a time, please.
Yeah, I know. I seldom disagree with Mr. Hinterstein. I was going to ask Chris, uh, if he can just. Indicate that all engineering, uh, comments and staff reports can be complied with. Do we have any issues, Chris?
Yes. No, we, we don't have any issues. Um, I think there was a few comments that required some additional testimony, which I believe I have touched on.
Yes, you did.
Unless I missed anything.
Thank you. So the answer is yes, John?
Okay, the dedication of, on Metlery's Lane, that's really a county jurisdiction. But are you willing to do that?
Well, John, that's subject to the county.
That, I know.
If they say so, we do it.
Item twelve is county jurisdiction and you would like that not included.
Chris, your call.
Yeah, I think in, i- if we were going to say yes right now, I would say an easement would be better so as not to impact. You know, uh, coverages and, and setbacks.
Okay. All right.
Um, but again, I, I think the county is pretty thorough with, with their review of the right of way.
Okay. Uh, and the only last item I didn't, maybe you did say it. Do you have a lights-out provision on this plan? We generally ask when the, you know, the temple is not occupied, uh. Service hours, whatever, most of the park, parking lot lights would be out. Other than the intersection you described, uh, driveway that you described.
We have no objection to that and we have all of our lights on a timer, so whatever the, uh, requirement is, we can.
All right.
John, what would that time be? Ten PM? Eleven?
Well, I don't have.
Lights out.
Ten would be fine unless during the holidays, it's still being used, you know, for some late services.
Okay.
My report is dated November sixth and Chris addressed. Most of the items that were of an engineering nature, so. We won't drag this out any longer.
Okay, we can move forward.
The comments.
Any other, any other board members have any questions or comments for Mr. Saleh? I think we're good. Mr. Stall, you can move forward.
Yes, sir. Nahal, where are you?
Oh, Mr. Saleh, take your, uh, thank you.
All right. Nahal, I'm here.
All right, Mr. Caneely, here he is.
If you raise your right hand, you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give should be the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
Please state your name spelling your last name.
Sure. My first name is Nehal, N E H A L. Last name is Javeri, J H A. V E R I.
And what are, uh, what are you engaged as?
I'm an architect. I'm a licensed professional in state of New Jersey and a couple of other states.
How long in New Jersey?
Uh, thirteen years.
And still valid in full force?
That is correct, sir.
Have you appeared before this board before?
No.
But other boards in New Jersey?
Absolutely.
Mr. Caneely, Mr. Dale. Mr. Stall, we can move forward.
Thank you. All right. Nahal, now you can, you're my friend and I respect you, but don't take a lot of time on this, okay? I know you're proud of your work, but I just.
The board appreciates that ahead of time, by the way.
Okay. No, he's very good, but I know the hell. I, I want you to describe, A, elevations with material. The floor plans, you don't have to go through each element because I think, uh, Rajiv did. So just, you know, I want the board to know what's going on, but we want to, uh, uh, respect their time, okay? Go to it.
Absolutely. Uh, may I share my screen, please?
Yeah.
Yes, please do.
Thank you. Okay, I guess you can see my screen. Okay. Um, first off, I have, uh, this sheet number Z one dated ten twenty two thousand twenty-three. And it's first floor plan. What we have is two buildings, uh, on the right side is the first floor of the main temple building. And to the left is just the, uh, portion of the second ancillary building. Uh, you would enter from the right side here, uh, on the first level, you go to the floor, you go towards the. I mean, this is normally everybody will have to do it. They go, they take off their shoes, uh, clean up their feet, uh, or wash their hands. Come inside this lobby, go upstairs through elevator or you would take the stairs to go to the second floor. Um, that's primarily the main function, uh, of the lobby and the floor area. If there is an. If there is an exhibition of educational religious uh purposes in this exhibition hall. They would proceed to the exhibition hall uh and uh walk around and get out. Uh, to the back on the first floor, we have uh four classrooms distributed along the entire back. Along with them, uh, you know, the men and women or boys and girls uh bathrooms. So that they don't have to cross the exhibition hall all the way to the other side of the front. And then you can get out from the back door, go towards the courtyard and.
Stay, stay for a minute, stop for a second. The, the indication patio play area, I mean, that is not for a childcare. That's just an outdoor area where some of the youngsters can be when the parents are at services. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, go ahead.
Thanks, thanks for clarification. Uh, and then you could go to the ancillary building. Uh, so that's how they are connected through this patio, uh, open patio. Uh, I'd like to say that. Um, when you get up to the second floor through the elevator and staircase, I'm gonna go to the second sheet. That's the second floor. It's called Z two, again dated ten twenty-two. Uh, it is a second floor. That's where we have the main worship hall. Now, the worship hall has about twenty-foot ceiling. Um, I'll get to that while I mention that. And uh, the primarily, you could come up the stairs, the monumental stairs on either side. They're open stairs. You can come up to the covered entry porch area. And you can enter the lobby, or you come through the elevators or stairs. Come through the lobby into the prayer hall because you've already taken off your shoes downstairs for the most part. Um, you'd be in the prayer hall area. That's uh an altar is something. And all the space behind the altar is completely restricted just for the priest. Nobody else can go there. Uh, again, this is very different than most of the other Hindu temples. Uh, we have this uh seven deities altogether, the five being the gods' shrines. And the high priest area and the other side, we have the offering room. So that's how they consider the seven. Um, you know, uh, deities there. Behind the altar area, again, it's primarily restricted area through this staircase. From upstairs, the uh priests are gonna come down. They would come down here and then that, that's where they have uh various rooms here mainly for storage and kitchen area. You may uh wonder why we have three different kitchens. Uh, again, this is uh the way everything works. That one, one part of the, one type of the food cannot really touch the other type, meaning the wet food, the dry food. And the daily food, everything has to be separated. That's why we have these three different kitchens. And then you have all these different storages that we have for ornamentations and decorations and things along that line. Now, the priest has to come and they will take the shower every time. That they are worshipping or they are preparing things for God. Uh, so they have to take, come here, take shower and then go inside the altar area. Only the high priest, whenever they come in, they have the access to the back. Again, they also have to, he will also have to take shower and go in the back. So very, very restricted area. Nobody goes there. There's two staircases on either end, staircase two and staircase three on the other side. It would be used by the priest, uh, and in case of emergency, it would be used from the third level. Now, you can go up to the third level through elevator and stairs. When I call third level, uh, and I mentioned twenty-foot ceiling height also. That ceiling height uh allows us to have some sort of a mezzanine area. But since, because technically speaking, it exceeds the building. Um, code uh requirement, we had to call it a third floor, otherwise it's merely a mezzanine. Because of how it's tucked in within the uh overall two-story space. So you have all this open area in the middle. You have a viewing area, a, a small viewing area. And then you have a smaller corridor on either side, what we call pilgrimage corridor. Again, they have restriction. They cannot go behind here for the most part because it's a priest area. And then a lot of the ceremonial storages that we're gonna need, uh, we had to take it from the second floor and put it up here. Uh, so we have two apartments for the priest. We do not have any kitchen in there. Again, they have to cook downstairs, only use that food only, whatever they're offering to the gods. Uh, we also have a high priest resting room. Whenever he comes here uh once or twice a year, whenever he decides to come here, that's where he's gonna rest. Uh, and public can have access to him from this corridor um with appointments mo- mainly. Uh, as far as the second building is concerned, hopefully this is explanatory by now. I'm gonna go to the second building, ancillary building. We call it dining hall. Sorry, I'm moving too much. A dining hall, multipurpose hall. Uh, that's where, again, all these uh social activities are gonna occur for the most part. We do have a kitchen. That's a warming kitchen. The fruit is brought here and then we're gonna warm it up and serve. Um, um, again, we have this uh accessory uh bathrooms and, you know, women and men's bathroom. You can go, again, this one, this hall has a monumental about twenty-feet ceiling height. Similar thing that we have done here, just above the kitchen area and the bathrooms, we have partial second floor only. Which has the administration office, uh, another offices and some storage area that they're gonna require. Uh, vessels and things along that line if they need uh to put it up there on the second level. Uh, I'm gonna go to the, uh, oh, first of all, I guess the first building, temple building is about twenty-five thousand eight hundred square feet. Uh, in total for all the floors. And the second building is about eight thousand square feet, the ancillary building. I'm gonna go to the building elevations. What we have is a monolithic building, uh, monolithic color more or less throughout. It's gonna be more, more or less a beige, a sort of stone uh or stone looking uh stucco. We still have to figure it out what kind of material that we're gonna have at the end of the day. But it's gonna be the earth tone and most, most of the things are gonna be only one color. Not multiple colors or not very vibrant colors or anything like that. There is a lot of Indianization that we had to do here. Some of these, some of these spears that you see here. They are more or less required. We have seven of them mainly because it represents the seven. Uh, seven uh, uh, the, the deities that we have inside, so it represents that. And that's why we had to have those seven, uh, you know, spears up top. The height of the building is to the roof is thirty-eight feet. And all the way on the top of the spear, the, the highest tallest spear we have is about forty-six feet. Um, you have the corridor all around with, again, uh, the more like a traditional Indian architecture. Is what we try to present here. Most of the time you don't see uh all around. But that's what we're trying to present uh here so that it, it, it does feel like very authentic. Uh, still grounded, not too tall, not too big, but that's what we feel that this represents the, the front. Same thing happens uh all around. So all the other sites also similar color, similar material. Uh, except for two materials, most likely we will not have any other materials. We may uh have uh the, what they call it, uh fiberglass um decorations. So a lot of these decorations or the roofs and all that could be made out of fiberglass. Uh, that we have used on other temples in the area and outside of New Jersey as well. So we feel confident about that, uh, how they're gonna look and how they're gonna fit in. Again, it's uh same thing on the other side. So pretty much the building is mirrored and identical on both sides. This is the rear of the building where the first floor is tucked in and the second floor and third floor are uh overhanging. Uh, the second, uh, you know, the portion of the first floor here. This is the courtyard side. I'm gonna go to the second building. It's uh, it is not as eminent as the, the front building. Uh, because first of all, it hides behind, completely hides behind the first building. And uh, it's, we didn't make it too elaborate as the first building because it's just an ancillary building. And it supports uh the activities that's going on on the first building, on the temple building. Uh, these are all the other sites, similar materials all around. Uh, so no, no variations in that, even if it's hiding behind. Uh, lots of windows. Again, you know, we tried to put a lot of natural lights and all that. Um, that's what we have. Uh, Jim, is it okay if I go to the renderings?
Real quick.
Yes, I know I took a long.
Thank you, Mister Stoll. Again.
Uh, sorry about that. So this, you can see the overview of the, you know, the, the bird's eye view of the building. How they sit on the property and how they look. Again, the colors, uh, you can see and the materials, more or less you can see what we tried to achieve here.
Okay. Looks good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any members of the board have any questions or comments?
One quick question, Mister Chairman.
Please, John.
Are the shukers gonna have lights in them or are they gonna be dark?
I'm sorry. Uh, no, no, they're gonna be dark.
Okay.
Yeah, we want to have lights.
Those are, those are the projections above the deities.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mister Chadwick. Any other members? Nope, Mister Stoll, put on your next witness.
Okay, where's, where's my pre-eminent traffic engineer?
Thank you.
Oh, he's got his hand up already.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Could you raise your right hand? To swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth.
Yes, I do.
Your name and address, please.
Uh, Jay Troutman, McDonough and Ray Associates, one oh five Elm Street, Westfield, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Hi, Jay, you are, what, you are a traffic engineer, is that correct?
Yes, licensed professional engineer specializing in traffic, um, appeared before this board recently, actually.
Great. Yes, your credentials are fine. You can proceed, Mister Stoll.
Go ahead, Mister Jay, just, you know the drill. Give us your analysis. Uh, and uh, take care of this board.
Yes, I'm go- going basically working from the outside in. We have a simple right-in, right-out access to the county road. Um, so high control of turning movements, no difficulties involving left turns or anything like that. Uh, because of that, right-in, right-out, we only really have to have gaps to get right turns out onto that two-lane section of Metler's. Um, we did what I'll call a worst-case peak hour analysis. We took the. The Saturday traffic volumes, which is the highest day, use day for this facility. And we, we assumed actually more of a church. Type event where everybody comes into a service and then everybody leaves, a lot different than what actually happens, but it, it's a worst-case traffic event. And we came up with a good grade on the uh level of service, that level of service B in the Saturday peak hour. And again, um, operationally, I think this works i- i- in our favor from a traffic standpoint, just because of the. The flat traffic pattern of having six different services you can attend to see the gods. So all the people are spread. Throughout the day instead of focusing on one event. Um, in terms of parking, uh, I think the parking supply is generous. You could actually. With a hundred and sixty-eight spaces at three people per car, you could actually get five hundred people on the site if that ever happened. Those are not the numbers that you heard earlier. That's a way higher number than what they would expect even on their largest festival day. Um, the website scheduling for those larger, more intense days. Um, is an important condition just again to keep the loading flat and ha- and those turnover times in between. As well are very important uh in terms of getting that parking lot empty before the next event comes. With all of that in place. Uh, we could anticipate smooth traffic operations. In terms of the parking variance, um, ti- typically at religious facilities. While the buildings may have a lot of different spaces. Um, the spaces are never used simultaneously for big events. And what I mean by that is the, the worship space may be active. And then the same people are gonna go to the exhibition hall and the same people are gonna go to the classrooms and the same people are gonna go to the dining hall. So it's really just all the same people moving around to different uses depending on what's on the schedule. So that you really don't need to park a, a site like this for, for simultaneous groups in each. Space, I believe the, the parking variance can be justified. Um, the amount of parking can handle. Uh, the, what I think would be the largest event here and just as a, as a safety precaution, I would endorse. The banked parking spaces. In case the township were to see something that they didn't like in terms of parking, they could always. Uh, they could always go to those bank spaces and require those to be constructed. And I think that's all I have.
Well, I just wanted to clarify, the, we're looking for a variance for the twenty-five spaces. But we would bank them in the event the township required them. Is that what, I just wanna clarify that.
Yes, it would be banked parking, meaning it's, it's, it doesn't, you don't construct the spaces, but you reserve it. If the township were to, to require them to be constructed, they would only be constructed under that scenario.
Okay.
Any members of the board, Mister Chadwick, you have any questions or comments?
Jim Caneley, the screen that showed the twenty-five spaces was not part of the submission. We should make that an exhibit.
Yeah, I believe Mister Zelay said he was gonna mark it as A three, but I don't think we did. I will mark that as A three.
Thank you. That we got Craig and Chris had put that up.
Yes.
Any other members of the board have any questions?
I agree with Jay's testimony. I think the twenty-five spaces probably will not be needed. Uh, given the numbers that they talk about, but you never know in terms of the congregation, it might grow.
True, all right. All right, but you, but you, Jay, all right, but you're calling, Edward Coling.
Mister Coling, are you present?
Yes, I am.
If you raise your right hand, swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give should be the truth.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
All right, Ed, give a quick overview of your life's experience.
Okay, well, I'm a graduate of Rutgers University in nineteen seventy-four. I've been licensed as a planner since nineteen eighty-four. Um, I've appeared in uh before boards throughout the, the state of New Jersey. Um, I have, I appeared once in Piscataway more than a few years ago at the planning board. But I have appeared lo- more locally at New Brunswick, in New Brunswick and Franklin Township. Um, uh, I've uh.
I, I believe that you're calling Kennedy, that's his next one.
Yes, I believe as well. Mister Stoll, please proceed.
All right, Mister Coling, uh, please, uh, you are engaged to do a professional planning testimony with regard to the required variances. Let's hear you.
Okay, and I'll try not to be too redundant because a lot of this has been covered by the other professionals. But uh, I do wanna point out this is in our twenty zone, that that's primarily designed for single-family homes and twenty thousand square foot lots. The proposed use of a house of worship, temple, church, whatever we wanna refer to it as, is a permitted conditional use. Uh, we will need a couple of variances from the, the conditions. Um, the proofs for a D three conditional use variance are. Uh, really centered upon a, a proof that the deviations from the criteria will not diminish. The property suitability for the conditional use, and that's what we're going to be discussing. Uh, we do meet most of the conditions or standards for the uh, for this use. Uh, however, we do exceed the maximum permitted lot area, which is five acres. As the engineer mentioned, we're five point six acres. I think that um, we, the property, though, we have to re- consider that the, it is impacted by the wetlands and the buffers. And so the resulting um usable or functional area is more like four point two acres. And this is within the permitted lot area. And as such, I think that the proposed project is consistent with the intent of the zone plan. And the intent of that particular reg- regulation and the granting of the variance. Uh, would not uh ha- have any detrimental impact on that intent of the zone plan. Nor would it have any substantial detriment to the uh general welfare and public goods. In fact, I think the additional lot area does allow for um a functional lot area. Uh, and still allow for the wetlands and buffer areas to be protected. So I think that again, the conditional use and variance in this regard can be uh, can be granted. Um, the uh other condition has to do with uh. Uh, a building containing a hospital, church, or other place of worship, Sunday school or church school shall not be used for any other use. Um, and in, in my own personal, my professional opinion, I think that the temple actually does. Um, uh, meet, meet that criteria. Uh, I know there's some question about some of the other ancillary uses that are within the temple. Um, but I would uh, I would say that these. Um, but I would, uh, I would say that these functions. Um, are really ancillary, accessory and essential to the function of, of the temple. So that, uh, I think we do fall within what the definition of a, of a church is. Or temple in this, in this regard, is a, is a building or structure or groups of buildings and structures. Or structures that by design and construction are primarily intended for conducting organized religious services. And that's what the, the temple is, any of those other functions, whether it be the church office, meeting rooms. The, the priest residence, for instance, or other preparation areas are all accessory. Uh, and subordinate to, uh, and customarily incidental to the church or temple use. Uh, having, uh, a residence as part of a church is really rather common, whether you call it a parsonage. Uh, a parish house or rectory, a residential component as part of a church is very common. So I think that this is really accessory to customary and incidental. Um, however, um, if here, if the variance, uh, is, is required. Um, I see that, I, I don't believe that that would, uh, result in any substantial detriment. Um, the, um, the, the residents, the offering, offering areas and all those other sort of, uh, functions. Are all within the church, with, uh, within the temple, are all, uh, essential to the function of the temple. And I don't think that they really re- resulted any detriment to the intent of the zone plan. Again, and I also think that the, uh, the inclusion of those uses, uh, would have any detrimental. Um, impact on the general welfare of public, public good. Again, they're all within the, the building. They don't, they, they are not standalone uses, they're not standalone residences. So I think that the impact would be rather slight, if any at all. Um, and in fact, this use is inherently beneficial, so I think you have to look at that from. Uh, any impact on the general welfare or the public good. Um, that same sort of discussion about the accessory versus principal uses, I think plays into the parking variance. Um, there is a parking requirement found in the conditional use requirements. And that is simply one space or, uh, for each three seats, uh, or seventy-two inches of seating space. Within the, uh, house of worship, so that would be a hundred and twenty-five parking spaces and we have a hundred and sixty-eight parking spaces. So there's no variance from the conditional use standard. Uh, and I think that that's written that way because it's a recognition that these are accessory functions. Um, and that as the, uh, traffic engineer pointed out, these uses don't compete, don't compete with each other. They share the, the, uh, uh, the parking, uh, essentially. So that, um, you know, so I don't think that there'd be any detriment by granting the variance to the, um. The parking requirement that is, that is found in section twenty-four, seven oh two point two. Which is in the general, in this, in the, uh, I think it's the site plan ordinance, it's not part of the conditional use standards. Um, there is provision in that portion of the ordinance that talks about the parking requirement for each use. Shall be computed separately and then, then added together to compute the total number of required parking spaces. And I think for, as a professional planner, that that, that requirement is really more aimed at. Where you have a combination of principal uses, where each use is gonna have its own requirements and its own parking demand. In this case, there really is only one principal use, the temple. Uh, and the other uses again are ancillary. Uh, and they, they're intended to function together, to complement each other. And they don't really have a, a, an increase, say, parking demand for each use, they share that demand. Uh, so I think that, um, by granting this variance, there would be no substantial detriment to the intent of the requirement. The parking requirement, and there would be no substantial detriment to the public good or general welfare. Because although we don't meet the full level of two hundred and forty parking spaces, if you did it as a combined requirement. We do exceed the one hundred and twenty-five spaces by an additional forty-three parking spaces. And that, that certainly should be enough to accommodate, uh, any, any parking demands or, or impacts. Um, uh, and then also as was described, we can create a. A banked area for additional twenty-five parking spaces should, uh, a, a demand, uh. You, you know, could be created at some point in time. The last variance, uh, that I will be addressing has to do with the building height. Um, this, this variance also is not related to conditional use standards, it's a bulk standard applicable to the R twenty zone. And, uh, as I was saying, the principal use within the R twenty zone are for single-family homes. So this height requirement is really more applicable to a single-family home. Uh, clearly, a church or a temple is going to be larger than a single-family home. Those types of structures serve a special type of need, a special type of purpose, they're a gathering place. Um, they have, they have a certain larger size inherent to just the, the, that type of, that type of use. Um, still, even though this is larger, uh, the building itself is only three feet taller than what the permitted thirty-five foot height for a single-family home would be. Uh, and when you add the ornamentation, it does reach forty-six feet. Uh, but this is not any different than the height differential that you would typically expect, say, uh, from a steeple on a church or a minaret on a mosque. Or any other type of religious ornamentation on a, any place of worship. So I, I think, I believe that this variance can be granted because the added height. Uh, of the building and, and the rooftop ornamentation are really inherent to the use of the building as a house of worship. Um, I don't see there'll be, that this will result in any detriment to the intent of the R twenty zone. Which is really geared to the height of a single-family home. Uh, and likewise, there'd be no substantial detriment to the public or the general welfare. The, the building is centered in the property, it's set back. A hundred, over a hundred feet from either side, it's set back two hundred feet from the, two hundred and fifty feet from the rear. So I think there would be very little impact on su- on surrounding property, so there's no substantial detriment to the public or their general welfare. Uh, and given again, apparently beneficial nature of the exposed development, I think this variance can also be granted. And that concludes my testimony.
Thank you.
Any members of the board have any questions or comments? Mr. Chapman? Chadwick, sorry?
I'm done. Sean, I, I have a question.
Sure.
Uh, are there any, uh, plans for solar panels, particularly on the roof?
Yeah, we, we haven't planned for it yet, but there was a discussion about it to make it, uh, energy efficient as much as possible. Um, because of the building codes that we have, it does make it pretty close to energy efficient, but we can certainly consider that thing.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, uh, Mr. Stoll, I was gonna suggest that we carry this, so I could produce a full board to you sometime in December.
Yeah, the only thing I had, Mr. K O, was can we close? And I'm really gonna, Mr. Cuneley's gonna have to answer, I mean, I was hoping we could go to the public. Close it, close the presentation, and then the only thing that occurs in December would be a decision.
My, my concern, my concern with that is if the members who listen to the tapes or read the transcripts. Have questions of your professionals, then we're gonna have to bring your professionals back and reopen the public again.
You're right. I defer to Mr. Cuneley, uh, he's correct.
Um, okay, um. I think.
Is it gonna be a virtual meeting?
Yes, it is.
All right, so they could be available, uh, we can work something out.
Yes. So, uh, are we gonna carry this to December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three with no further notice?
That would be my request.
Okay, anybody in the public, uh, the board only has five members this evening. The applicant is entitled to seven members when a vote is taken on a use variance like this. The applicant has elected to carry this matter to December fourteenth. Uh, with no further notice, the only notice you're receiving is my announcement here tonight. With the hope that seven members are eligible to vote. At the December meeting, uh, the members who are missing tonight may ask questions. At the conclusion of that, uh, any member of the public that wishes to speak for or against this application will have an opportunity to do so. Uh, and then the board would vote on the matter. Thank you, Mr. Cuneley.
Uh, V Y O team, I just wanted to, I'll speak with the, uh, V Y O team. It's not my intention to have everybody at that next meeting, I'll, we're gonna work something out. Um, to be efficient, so, uh, on the fourteenth, hopefully I would, we'll see what happens on the fourteenth.
Well, Mr. Stoll, I could, uh, speak to the two other members that are missing and find out if they have any questions once they've li- uh, listened to the transcripts. And, um, if they had any particular questions for your planner or for your engineer architect, I would, um, I'd let Mr. Cuneley know ahead of time.
Mr. K O, I'm gonna ask that, but I thought it was presumptuous of me to suggest that, so I kept my big mouth shut.
A presumptuous lawyer? No.
Oh, I know a couple, but I'm not gonna mention their name.
On one hand, um, well, anyway, have a great night and we'll see you on the fourteenth.
All right, have a great Thanksgiving, everyone.
You too.
Okay, bye-bye.
Very much.
Let's move on to item number fifteen, the discussion of the adoption of twenty twenty-four zoning board. The calendar. I have no issues if anybody see, uh, sir, a copy of it. Yeah, all in favor of the calendar? Say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, let's move on to item number seventeen, the adoption of minutes from the regular meeting of October twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Make a move to adjourn. Once again, everyone, thank you for your volunteering. Have a great Thanksgiving and we'll see you back here second week of December.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you for coming, everyone.
Yes.